Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense and more. Now here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey.
All right, folks. Well, hey, Lance Pelkey is still making pizza in Italy, so we won't see him until I think next weekend he's coming in. I'm not sure. I think he cruises back in July or May 4th.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, something like that. So maybe not next weekend, maybe the weekend after. I mean, who knows?
Yeah, he's out for, I think, one, at least one more.
One more.
At least one more Sunday.
Geez, how hard is it to make a pizza? But that's okay. Hey, this segment is brought to you by Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego. Go to gunrangessandiego.com for all your gun and safety needs. They have training. They've got phenomenal range. You can go there. There's plenty of people that could help educate you if you've never shot before. That's the kind of a customer they're looking for, but they also take care of the experts just as well. Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue, 10 to 10, seven days a week, gunrangessandiego.com. Well, in the house, we've got Michael Schwartz. How are you today, sir?
Fantastic.
SanDiegoCountyGunOwners.com. Make sure you sign up.
Yep. We just, a bunch of members just got back from Sporting Clays out in.
That's where you were at this morning, yeah.
Yep. So I'm nice and sunburned and.
Yeah, you do look a little toasty, but that's okay. And we've got a very special guest. We've got Juan Barra in the house. How you doing, bud?
Living the dream.
Owner, operator of Trident Gunsmithing specializes really in the hunting community. You have training, you have, heck, you even got people to teach you how to cook the game you shoot.
We do, yeah. We have a sausage class.
Yeah.
That teaches you how to, now that sounds weird.
No, it smells good though.
What to do with the meat after you get it, yeah.
Yeah. Now, one of the things that you do at Trident Gunsmithing, I mean, you've got a phenomenal gunsmith to start with.
Right.
Actually, two.
Uh, one and a half.
One and a half. Dan and you.
Dan, right.
But, you know, and, and, and the, no gun is in any problem. I mean, you can, you know, Dan doesn't turn anything away.
No, from black powder, Civil War era, all the way to modern, modern weapons.
And there's not that many really good gunsmiths around. I mean, they're, they're out there, but they're few and far between.
Yeah, it's definitely a dying breed.
And a lot of them, yeah, a lot of them are not interested so much in the old stuff. They just want to do the new stuff.
Right.
Yeah. So we're going to get back to Juan here in a few moments. Michael, did you have a caller calling in?
Sure. Mike Morosco is, he.
I think Mike Morosco is on the line. Mike, are you there today, sir?
I am here.
Hey, Mike, how you doing? Mike is the city council member for the beautiful city of Escondido. Um, and he has. You bet. An endorsed Second Amendment candidate and a huge supporter of Second Amendment rights. And, and thank you for being on the show, Mike.
It's my pleasure. Nice being with you gentlemen today.
You bet. Now, you're, you are a, a pro Second Amendment guy. You've, again, been endorsed by San Diego County Gun Owners. Can you talk a little bit about your background and, and the city council of Escondido?
I'd be more than happy to do that. Always had an affinity towards and have liked guns. I've, my father was a 30-year Navy man and he, in his later years after retirement, he was always a collector. President of the coin club in Poway growing up and things like that. But one of the things that he always collected were guns. He bought, sold and traded, traded collectible guns all over the place. So we always had guns in and around our home. And so they were second nature to us, nothing alarming or disconcerting. And we've always enjoyed it. And I've had guns for a good portion of my life. And, uh,
And how do you, how do you?
I enjoy them.
Good. How do you feel about the, the gun laws in general in California?
The laws that aren't being enforced or the new laws that they want to enforce.
Very good, very good.
Well, in, in general, I, I think that they, they don't come close to hitting the target. They're designed to punish honest, hardworking, safe gun users and not to really do anything as far as criminal action and criminal activity are concerned. And the last thing that we need is a, a, a new iteration of the same old issue that we're, we're currently addressed with.
Now, as a city council, as a city council member in Escondido, how often does the issue come up? Either for or against, how often do you hear about Second Amendment or gun issues?
I've been on the city council now for eight years and it's really not something that comes up as far as public discourse or agenda, agendaized items. It's more along the lines of private conversations, constituent conversations, um, individuals who, and/or groups who have, you know, specific, you know, thoughts, perspectives and beliefs as far as gun ownership is concerned and as well as licensure to be able to carry guns. And overwhelmingly, it's what I support as far as, you know, gun ownership, gun safety and the right to conceal carry. And very, I can't even think of any time that we've been addressed or I've been addressed about someone who wants to make gun laws more stringent or stricter than they currently are, except for perhaps a couple of correspondents recently after some of the school tragedies that we've witnessed.
Yeah, it's, you know, San Diego County Gun Owners, we've been around for two and a half, almost three years now. And, uh, you know, our, our main focus are the, the 18 city councils, the county board, the sheriff. And a lot of people kind of, you know, ask, well, gee, aren't those issues that are handled in Sacramento and Washington DC? But increasingly, I feel like we were, we were ahead of the curb, you know, increasingly more and more. There are cities that are being pressured into, uh, you know, trying to pass anti-gun policies and, and some resolutions recently. Like, I don't know if you heard, but the city of Delmar passed a resolution asking to ban all semi-automatic guns, which is like 80% of the guns out there right now, at least 80%. And, and they're also asking for the gun show to be removed from, you know, the state-owned fairgrounds.
Crazy.
And, you know, I, I make the case that, you know, Escondido has just as much claim to those fairgrounds as Delmar. It has nothing to do with their proximity, you know, we all pay state taxes. And, you know, what are your thoughts on that? What are your thoughts on the city of Delmar?
Well, they think they own the fairgrounds.
Yeah, right. Well, what are your thoughts on the, the, the city of Delmar trying to, uh, you know, get the state to, to reject the gun show?
Well, completely overreaching. First of all, their, their ordinance to, to outlaw all semiotic, semi-automatic weapons within their city, ludicrous. In all honesty, it, it most likely falls into the category of not even understanding what a semi-automatic weapon is.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Exactly.
How they function, you know, you know, the purposes, the uses and everything else. So that, that's number one. Secondly, to, to ban something that's been functioning extremely well for how many decades now? At, at the state-owned fairgrounds, as you stated.
Yeah, at least.
Completely in opposition to that.
Close to three decades now.
Well, and, and this is a side note, but they did the same thing to motorsports. There used to be some great motorsport venues out at the Delmar Fairgrounds, but the city of Delmar just said enough is enough and they threw them out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, how does that happen?
How do they do it? How do they do it?
Well, I think that not enough people show up, you know, their, their side shows up and the squeaky wheel gets the oil. So I wanted to touch a little bit, it's not exactly Second Amendment related.
The gun oil? Is that what you?
Yeah. Squeaky wheel gets the, the hoppies, I guess.
I guess, yeah.
Um, the, uh, I wanted to touch on a little bit, you guys just made national news with.
Congratulations.
With your opposition to the sanctuary state policies. And I just wanted to see if you could just give us a, give us a little update on that and give us your thoughts on that.
Yeah, interesting. We, as you well know, as a local municipality, we're, we're subject to so many different layers of county and state and federal ordinances and laws. And so we have to, you know, toe the line, not only with the, the laws that are on our own books, or the ordinances that are on our own books, the city of Escondido, many of which are there by, uh, by citizen's vote that they determined that that's what they wanted for the city of Escondido. We have to, you know, mind our Ps and Qs and follow the laws, make sure we're doing everything correctly. The problem comes when we start to have interfering laws, either, you know, the county, the state or the federal level. And in this particular case, you know, we have three specific state laws, you know, AB and Senate bills that were, you know, instituted that fly in the face of constitutional logic and hopefully constitutional law. We believe that the federal government's perspective on these, these state laws is correct, that they are unconstitutional and they do not appropriately interplay and, and interact with the laws of the land. So even though we right now as a city are obeying the laws of the state of California, we don't believe that they are, they are appropriate. We don't believe that they're safe. We, we believe it significantly hamstrings our law enforcement and their ability to safely protect the citizens of our city, whether they are here legally or otherwise. And we've had, uh,
I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off. So it looks like it's, it's having a pretty deep impact on your city. And then you're simply saying, hey, look, guys, this, this isn't the right thing to do and we want to stand up and.
And they agreed. I mean, the city took care of the problem and now you got Governor Brown mad at you.
Yeah, well.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, doesn't really, you know, break my heart because we, we are, we have so many state mandates that are, especially the unfunded state mandates that make absolutely no sense for our region. And we are, we can't do anything about it.
So Mike, I hate to cut you off, but we gotta, we gotta go to a commercial break, but you're up for reelection. How do people find you on your, on the internet?
Well, luckily I'm not up for reelection until 2020.
Oh, my apologies.
Yeah, so just, we'll, we'll keep you posted as to when the, that reelection camp, campaign does kick off.
All right. Well, you let us know. We'll be behind you 100% sir.
Appreciate you gentlemen.
All right. Hey, we're gonna have to take a small break. We've got Juan's in the house. He's gonna come in and tell us about Trident. I think he's got some other news for us. He just hasn't told us what it is yet. Right here on AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170, The Answer. Michael Schwartz in the house along with Juan. Juan's from Trident Gunsmithing, tridentgunsmithing.com, tridentgunsmithing.com. They've got unbelievable sales and they're really, they're a gunsmithing store, but they're also really heavily into hunting. You got your kids are growing up and it's time for them to learn how to hunt. You need to go to Trident Gunsmithing. They've got classes you can take. Just really, really great folks, very, very knowledgeable. Dan's the basic gunsmithing gentleman over there that knows anything and everything there is to know. Both gentlemen, Juan and Dan, ex-military. And we got Tosh in there. He's always in there helping out. So Juan, welcome to the show.
Glad to be here.
So Michael asked an interesting question off, you know, and one of the, one of the questions or the question was, why would you open up a gunsmith store in San Diego?
That's a great question.
You haven't figured it out yet?
No, no, you know, it definitely wasn't to become millionaires. I'll tell you that.
Absolutely.
You know, honestly, Dan started the gunsmith shop out in Santee about a year before I, I came into the picture. Him and I have been friends a little over 20 years.
Oh, wow.
I forgot about that. He was out in Santee, uh, over almost that lakeside, right?
Yeah, exactly. Right off the 67 there.
I forgot about that.
Um, you know, when you opened that up, I started, you know, going, hanging out with him and we started talking. There was issues there with the landlord that he wouldn't allow us to, or allow Dan at the time to sell guns. So Dan and I started talking and I said, well, you know, why don't we try to do something else? Then we kind of partnered up and decided to move to the Miramar area and open up the gun shop there.
Right.
The main reason honestly is to educate people. Gun stores get a pretty bad rap. And we were tired of hearing all that. And, you know, guns in general, you know, we want to educate people as to, yes, guns are not toys. They're a definite tool that needs to be respected. And we want to teach people that, that they're not as dangerous as they think. When they are properly handled and with proper training.
Right. Well, and the other thing, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'll, you correct me if I'm wrong, but five years ago, eight years ago, there's some gun stores in town that if you weren't a seasoned shooter, they didn't want to talk to you.
Right. And there's still a few out there like that.
Well, I was being kind.
Yeah.
So you got to find the ones that care about the first-time shooter.
Right.
Because once you get a first-time shooter in the store, and I've been to your store many, many a times, and both you and Dan are always in there, there was that one gentleman that was having a hard time with his, his nine millimeter.
Right.
And you guys must've spent, geez, I don't know how much time walking him through it.
Right.
And I think that's what people need to look for. I know this sounds like an infomercial, but folks, if you don't know about stores like Trident, because I can tell you right now, Lance and I are real, 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 real picky who we bring on board. We listen, we, we take a lot of what Michael Schwartz has to say, because, you know, with the San Diego County Gun Owners, if he says, hey, you need to go talk to the Trident boys, that's what we do. And we've been with you now a couple of years and you've been stellar. I mean, every customer I've sent there has always come out more knowledgeable than when, when they went in.
Well, we, we believe in customer service.
Yeah, because that's where your money's at.
Right.
It may take a while. It won't, you can't do it overnight. Talk about the hunting classes. What, what is it? Why does somebody need to take a hunting class?
Well, for one, safety first and foremost. You gotta know what to do when you're out there, how to properly handle your rifle. Things as simple as how to cross a creek or go over a fence or under a fence. You know, people don't know what to do that. And that's how accidents happen. They'll be trying to jump over a fence. All of a sudden their rifle gets caught, the trigger gets pulled and boom, boom, an accident.
And wasn't there a politician that shot another politician?
Yeah, Dick Cheney.
Yeah.
And didn't he shoot someone?
Well, it wasn't a politician, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, hello.
He was out bird hunting and he got a little, got a little peppered. You know, I, I actually, uh, you know, we're a political organization, San Diego County Gun Owners. We're not a hunting organization necessarily, but we have a lot of folks that want to get into hunting. What, you know, what are, if someone, you know, hey, I'm a gun owner. You know, I'm a shooter, I'm an experienced shooter, that sort of thing. What are the steps? How do you, how do you, how does that person get into hunting?
The, the, the first thing you gotta do is take your hunting license, uh, your safety, hunter safety class. Once you go through that.
What?
Um, it's, so there's two options. You can either do the online and a follow-up course, which you go online, you take, you read through the course, take a test. And then you come in for a follow-up class, which is about four hours. Or you can do the all-day class, which is about 10 hours of classroom instruction, which follows everything that's online, just in the classroom.
Do you do it in one day or two days?
One day.
For 10 hour?
Yeah, yeah, one day.
What's the, what's approximate cost of that?
25.
25 dollars?
25 dollars, yeah.
For 10 hours of training?
Yeah.
Well, you don't pay your teacher very well, do you? Holy moly, 10 hour, let me do the math. 20 cents a hour?
Yeah, no, it's definitely not a, a money maker.
It's not a money maker.
It's not. And that's not why we do it. You know, it's, it's about the education, honestly.
Are other stores out there charging maybe higher prices for that same?
You know, I've heard that there are some, just throughout California, they'll charge 50.
Because folks, just because Trident does it at 25, that doesn't mean Joe's Gun Range is going to charge you 25.
Right.
You gotta do your shopping.
Right, yeah. There are a few, um, other places in California that will charge a little bit more.
And what, what made you guys decide to, to, you know, add the, the hunting aspect or kind of specialize in the hunting aspect? What led to that?
Because it was lacking?
Yeah, I mean, it honestly is.
Because you're the only one I know that doesn't.
There's, there's another, uh, another range here in San Diego that, that does the classes down in the South Bay area. I guess it would be Southeast County. Um, and I believe we're the only two that are doing it.
And there's a lot of hunters.
There's a lot of demand. Um, you know, we had to take a little break because of some stuff that happened with our instructor. But in between there, it, uh, we've had, I don't know, probably 50 to 100 people call and ask, hey, when, when are the classes kicking in?
When's the next class? When's the next class? Now, for 10 hours, I mean, kind of give us a rundown. I mean, does it start off with safety?
Yeah, it starts off with safety and then it goes on even down to, um, a little bit on how to, how to field dress the animal.
Okay.
Once you, once you take care of it.
Yeah, because you don't know how to do that.
Right. Um, everything from staying hydrated, you know, when you're going out hunting, you gotta bring water with you because you're out in the field, you get hot. You know, if you don't bring proper equipment to survive out there.
How to dress?
How to dress, exactly. Dressing, um, how to acquire a target, make sure that it's safe, that there's nobody behind you, behind that target.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Are animals colorblind?
That's a great question. I don't know.
Because, you know, you see some guys going hunting in camo.
The deer with the orange, I'm pretty sure.
Then you see people go hunting in bright orange.
Well, that's actually safety for the, for the people.
Granted, I'm just wondering if the animals can see this big, you know, orange running.
That's a, you know, that's a great question.
I'll ask my wife. If anybody knows my wife will know.
I don't know.
So, and then after you take the course, then what happens?
Then you go and you buy your hunting license through the California fishing, I guess they're, it's not called fishing game.
Okay, so you don't sell the license at Trident?
We don't.
You have to physically go to the game?
Yeah.
Game wardens or the?
Right, right. And then you buy your tags for whatever it is you want. Excuse me, because you got a.
Dove, pheasant.
Dove, pheasant, pig. Yeah, whatever it is, deer. Because there's, there's a season for every animal. I think pig is about the only one that's year-round.
Do you teach the, uh, you know, what's a legal, uh, you know, what's legal, I mean, if you're going to shoot, let's say, deer.
Right.
Is there part of the course, you don't like, you don't shoot, you don't shoot the does, you can only shoot the males?
The males and so many points as far as the.
Oh, the rack?
The rack.
Right. And how many you can shoot? You can't shoot 300 and throw them in your trunk?
No, no. So it's one tag per deer. So you buy one tag per deer.
Oh, I got you.
And you're limited to, I believe it's two. And then there's actually some zones where there's a lottery. You have to apply for lottery because they sell out really quick.
Yeah. And then I think if there was, because we've had an overabundance of pig, I mean, those seem, seem to be taking over. So I'm sure if the game warden decides they need to do a, a clean out, you know, they would look to the people that are licensed and have their.
Right.
Permits.
Right, yeah. You go and you buy your pig license. I have like three licenses I gotta go fill right now. Or three tags, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot of barbecue.
That is a lot of barbecue.
He invited me in.
I haven't gotten them yet. Wait till I get them.
So in California, it's, uh, pig, turkey, deer, dove.
Dove, yep.
Um, what, what is that, pretty much the big?
Those are the big ones. Yeah, those are the big ones. Um, I believe there's bear in some areas.
Yeah, goat.
Probably goat.
Probably.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you name it, there's somebody going to hunt it.
Yeah.
I mean, pheasants.
Yep.
Geese or gooses?
I don't know about gooses or geese. I know turkey's a big one.
I imagine, say, come on, they're trying to generate money to their pockets. So.
Right.
Anything that flies is going to have to have a tag or some kind, wouldn't you think?
There's also, um, you have your archery season and then you have your firearm season. So archery kind of goes for the whole year, but they get a head start. They, that kicks in before the firearm season.
Gosh, well, it's a little harder to get a game with a, with a bow and arrow.
Yeah.
And you've got one right next door to you that's pretty stellar.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a beautiful, um, archery store.
I know. Have you gotten, you know, have you done it yet? No?
No, I have a bow. I haven't hunted with a bow yet. But yeah, when we first opened up the store, we went over there and talked to, to Bob.
He's a great guy.
He's a great, yeah, he is. He's, he sold me a bow. So I've been practicing.
Have you?
But, um, I haven't done it yet.
I walked over there and I says, hey, did you be interested in advertising on the show? He says, look around. Okay, nice talking to you.
Yeah.
He was so busy. All right, let's take a quick break. We come back, a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. Gun Sports Radio right here on AM 1170. I'm Dave. Lance is in Italy, but we have Michael Schwartz and we got Juan Barra in the house from Trident Gunsmithing. Had a great segment last time. This segment's brought to you, actually, the last one was to Gasky Dillon and Balance LLP. If you ever get yourself into a legal situation and need help, give John a call, 760-431-9501, or go to ca-firearmslaw.com. He's your one-stop shopping when it comes to legal advice. And if you send him an email, tell him you heard it right here on radio. He doesn't charge you for the first initial question. And half the time he'll get all the way to the other end of it and not charge you anything because he's that kind of guy. But right now we've got Gun Sports Radio. This is their segment. Hollywood would normally be here. Gun Range San Diego is your premier gun range. I call it the Nordstroms of gun ranges. 7853 Balboa Avenue, open 10 to 10, seven days a week. Trident, uh, the gun, Trident, thegunrangessandiego.com is the best way to find them. But right now let's chat with Jason. Hey, Jason, how you doing, bud?
Hey, I'm all right. Afternoon, Dave. How's it going?
Are you working or are you relaxing?
Oh, I'm, I'm always here.
Of course you are.
What's up?
So what's going on in lovely Gun Range San Diego?
Uh, not, not much. Just, you know, keeping busy, selling guns, people shooting on the range. And that's what you'd expect.
Absolutely. Uh, so anything exciting going on? I mean, you guys got any specials going on? You got any classes that people should know about?
You know, we, um, we've got this, the Smith &amp; Wesson SD9 and SD40 pistols are on sale right now. Normally they're 399, they're 329 right now. So they'd like a good and expensive, solid quality Smith pistol. That's the one to get.
And what would be the reason someone would want that? I mean, what, what's the purpose of that particular weapon?
It's a great entry weapon. It's a great entry pistol, just to kind of start to get into the sport. Great price point, got good customer service, kind of everything you need, nothing you don't.
So why, so you have it in nine millimeter and 40 caliber?
That's right.
So here's the, here's the controversial, here's the controversial question. Why would somebody buy it in nine millimeter? Or why would somebody buy it in 40 caliber? What would you say the difference in the, uh, the calibers are? Why would one prefer one over the other? Give us a little background on that.
Well, you know, 40, it's, it's starting to fall out style a little bit. Um, the technology for nine millimeter rounds, it just has just, it's really surpassed it. Very, very, uh, the vast majority of people are going to take the nine mil because nowadays, uh, nowadays there are nine millimeter rounds that do, you know, 45 caliber damage. And, you know, you can hold more rounds, of course. Well, we are limited to 10 in California, you know, but 40 cal actually kicks more than 45 despite being, you know, despite doing less damage. Got a lot of recoil.
Why is that?
It is still a stronger round.
That doesn't make.
It's a higher pressure. It's a higher pressure round. 45, big old, you know, slower round. It's a great round. It's a great man stopper. But it's, it's a relatively slow round. It's very low pressure. Uh, most 45 rounds don't move any more than 800, 850 feet per second, uh, on average. You can actually stand off to the side if you see someone shooting one and you can actually watch the thing lob it like a, like lob the bullet like a little cannonball across the range. Now, nine millimeter higher pressure round usually moves about 11, 1150 feet per second. Smaller bullet though, 35 caliber bullet. So, you know, it moves faster than you can see, but, uh, very controllable. Now, 40 cal, 40 cal, most 180 grain slugs in 40. It's a higher pressure round, sort of like a nine millimeter, but the diameter of the bullet is bigger. So you're kind of taking both a bigger round and you're keeping that higher pressure in the round, uh, when you fire it. So it actually moves you more when you shoot it than 45 does.
Interesting.
So that's why 40 is actually kind of starting to fall out a little bit.
So it's a little bit bigger than a nine millimeter, but just as fast.
That's right.
So you get a little bit more of a snap.
A little bit slower. Right. It's definitely a snappier round. Um, whereas the 45, you know, you can actually comfortably shoot most 1911s with one hand. Uh, or a SIG pistol and HK. Uh, but a 40 cal is, is not a, it's not the most popular choice, but it's there for the people like, like police departments. Many police departments, you know, they, they issue weapons in 40 because it's kind of, it is, it is a good man stopper. It just kicks more than 45 does.
Interesting. Now, I've heard that 40 caliber, uh, started to kind of, interest started to wane because it was, I guess it took off because the FBI was using it a lot. And, and then.
The FBI, yeah, made it from 10 millimeter.
And then, yeah, because, right, because they went, I guess it was after that.
Yeah.
That, that Miami shootout that was pretty popular. They decided, hey, we want to, we want something different than a nine millimeter, but we don't want a 45.
Right.
So they looked at a 10 millimeter and a 40 and it's basically the same. Now, what is the difference between a 10 millimeter and a 40 caliber?
Well, 10 mil was developed, I want to say, I think it's the late seventies, early eighties. Uh, and that was developed as the one hitter quitter is what a lot of people call it. It's more powerful than 45. It's like putting a 357 Magnum in a pistol. Uh, it's, it does a little more damage than that. Now, the problem with that is, does come with the recoil. It kicks, uh, it's a Magnum pistol, it's a Magnum cartridge. So it, it, it does kick, you know, a little bit. If you're not used to it, it's not comfortable. So the FBI went away from it. Smith &amp; Wesson took the round, necked it down just like you would a 38 from a 357. They called it 40 cal Smith &amp; Wesson. It's actually the same exact bullet, just shorter. So you can think of 10 millimeter as 40 caliber Magnum.
Interesting. So then, uh, what I understand, when, when the war broke out after, after, uh, 2001, a lot of federal law enforcement that were over in the Middle East, serving with special forces guys, you know, they were having trouble because all the, all the military, they were all using nine millimeter at the time. And I've heard that that had a little bit of an impact on why they decided to start changing and, and standardizing and under, behind the nine millimeters. Is, is any of that true at all? Have you heard anything like that?
A little, a little bit. There, there's a, and then there's always several factors. Uh, one, for one, nine mil is just cheaper. It's just cheaper to manufacture, it's cheaper to, to, to buy in bulk. Uh, it is a lot more controllable. You know, those of us who are, you know, avid shooters know, you know, especially defensive wise, know that shot placement is far more important than how big a bullet is. You can do more with, with three nine millimeter rounds than you can do with, with, you know, one 40 cal round in the same amount of time, just a. you know, one forty cal round in the same amount of time, just about.
It's an interesting way of putting it.
Practice too. Right, it, it, it really depends where you put a round, you know, defensive wise, uh, just a far more controllable cartridge, you know, in, in general.
Interesting.
And it's cheaper too, so, you know.
Well, speaking of which, do you still have a thousand rounds of nine millimeter on sale for two hundred bucks?
I do, you know, it depends on the brand. Uh, right now, we got some, we got some for two-ten, but it's a much higher quality brand. We have Remington UMC. We also have my favorite, nine millimeter Selye and Bello, one twenty-four grain, very, very consistent cartridge. Uh, you can take each bullet in a scale and it'll all weigh the same. So a lot of competition shooters are using that right now.
Gotcha. But just like, say, for home defense, I mean, you know, and you wanna get yourself a, a case of nine millimeter, you know, two hundred bucks?
It definitely wouldn't hurt.
Yeah.
You're never not gonna need the rounds, you know, you're gonna be practicing, you know, hopefully you won't be using it for self-defense, but you'll have them. But it's uh, it's something, you can't run your car without gas and you can't run a gun without rounds.
That's right.
You're gonna, you're gonna need them anyway, and you wanna get them this year before you're, you're not able to just walk in, walk out with them next year.
Exactly, exactly. Let's see, you still got five more minutes. What else you got for us?
Yeah. Well, shoot, there's always our memberships for those of you.
Oh, yeah, talk about that.
Gun Range San Diego. We uh, we have a, we have different tiers of membership. A bronze membership, for instance, is two seventy-five a year. You get full access to all these lanes we've got. We have thirteen lanes. Uh, you get a five percent discount off all the gear and ammo you can get here and you get free eyes and ears if you need them. Uh, there's the gold membership, which is probably, probably the more, the more popular option. It's five fifty a year, but you get all that stuff, all the above, you also get a free guest every year. Uh, I'm sorry, every visit. So you can bring a friend, a girlfriend, anything, you can bring anybody for free. You get, you get uh two uh gun cleanings a month. You can, you know, you can shoot, drop your gun off, next time you come in, it'll be ready, you know, for you to shoot again, it's all clean. Uh, you get to, you get free gun rentals. A lot of the guns we have are uh ten dollar rentals, you get all those for free. You also get twenty-five percent off classes you take. So definitely go for the gold if you plan on shooting with somebody else.
Yeah, and is that the top of the line?
Now, there's the platinum, that's a thousand, you get all that stuff, you get two guests for free every visit and get, you know, free eyes and ears. You get ten percent off gear, including ammunition. You even get five percent, automatic five percent off guns and optics, which is a big deal. Uh, you get front of line privileges. The gold, the gold, you also get front of line privileges, but when you're platinum, you walk in, you drop your ID, the next lane that opens up, if we're full, you are going in. So if you don't have much time, that's the one to get.
And it's funny, when you give the discounted prices, you know, for the different memberships, your basic prices are about as cheap as anybody in town, so.
It's already pretty cheap.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, folks, if you join up, if you thought the, the base prices were a screaming deal, belonging to the org, you know, belonging to these different clubs, you can save even more money. So I think that's, but you know, again, it's just like Trident. You know, we're sitting here, we've got Juan in the house, and everybody's, same thing with Gun Range San Diego, it's all about the people. You guys love bringing in the young shooters, people that have never shot before, cause you guys like to sit there and mold them and train them, you know, the gun sport, uh Gun Range San Diego way.
Yeah, we, we, we really enjoy teaching new people how to shoot, especially people who are uh, you know, a lot of people, you know, especially nowadays, you know, automatically kind of balk at the idea of owning a firearm or even shooting one, but you know, I, I can't tell you how many times I've seen somebody who, you know, they're very against guns and the whole idea that, you know, of, of having one for protection. They'll go in there, they'll shoot and they come out with a big smile on their face and, you know, maybe I didn't think this through, you know?
Yeah.
Maybe there's more to this than, you know, just angry dudes and, you know, it's, it's a lot more to it than that. So it always makes me happy.
Say it over and over again, our big advantage is it's a lot more fun to shoot a gun than it is to ban a gun.
That's exactly right. Hey, I just thought a great idea, how you go to Disneyland and you go to Magic Mountain and when you come down the roller coaster and they always take a picture of you with that panicked look on your face? You guys need to take pictures of these people coming off of the range that have never shot before, that's got that big dewy looking, look on their face, start putting them on the wall.
You'd be surprised how many foreigners come out with that look on their face.
Oh, I could just imagine. I mean, ten day, ten, ten to ten, seven days a week, Gun Range San Diego, that's where you need to be in there. And Mondays is a special day, cause isn't there discounts on the rentals?
That's right, it's free rental day. Monday's free rental day, all the basic rentals are free.
Yeah.
And Tuesday, it's customer appreciation night. Come in at five o'clock, it's five dollars to shoot on Tuesday.
Wow, that is awesome. And you have everything there. If somebody doesn't have ammo, you've got ammo, you can sell them, you know, so it's all right there. But I highly recommend using your uh, you know, what I call the library, because man, if you have any doubt whatsoever what you wanna shoot, you already got it, that you, in the rental fleet?
You got a huge selection.
Yeah, they could just, and you guys are constantly putting them in there, so that's awesome. Well, Jason, thank you very much, uh, and hope to see you at the gun prom uh next Saturday.
All righty, well, thank you, Dave.
All right, bud.
You have a good one.
All right, we're gonna take a small break. We come back, we got Juan, he's gonna tell us all about Trident Gunsmithing, got some other little tidbits, plus we're gonna talk about the gun prom. There's still time, there's still seats available. You definitely wanna be there if you're involved in Second Amendment rights and maybe you might wanna win a few guns and maybe some other cool things. So stay tuned, this is Gun Sports Radio, AM 1170, the answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back, Gun Sports Radio, right here on AM 1170. I'm Dave Lance, is still in Italy, making pizza, from what I understand. Hey, this segment's brought to you by the good folks at Trident Gunsmithing. Go to tridentguns smithing.com for all your hunting needs. And if you're looking for ammo and weapons, they have them there as well, but the thing that really makes Trident Gunsmithing stand out is their gunsmith. Their gunsmith could take an old gun, maybe your relatives gave it to you, your grandfather gave it to you, and you don't wanna go out and shoot it, trust me. You wanna take it over to Dan, let Dan go from, you know, stem to stern, make sure that's gonna be a safe weapon and that that weapon's not gonna hurt anybody, cause that's the key. Trident Gunsmithing, uh, the people that work there are military, ex-military, they're proud to serve their country and they really believe in the Second Amendment rights, and nothing they like better is getting brand new students in there, they've never, ever shot before and help them out. They also have hunting classes, teach you how to dress an animal and get your license and, you know, get out there in the woods and, and go hunting for dove and quail and all the different things out there. They have weapons and ammo for that. You just sit down and talk to them as to what you're trying to get yourself into, they can do it. They also have all the bags and accessories that you will need once you purchase your firearm, if you do, from uh Trident, cause you'll have to have it, you know, special boxes with locks and they have everything you'll need there, plus a lot of other fun stuff as well. But before we go to Juan, let's go to Michael. Uh, gun prom is right around the corner, it's coming up this Saturday.
This Saturday, April twenty-eighth.
In your room?
So less than a week, uh, in Del Mar on the fairgrounds. And uh, yeah, there's still seats uh available. Uh, if you want information, it's at gunprom.com, gunprom.com. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh, we're gonna raffle off, we have over twenty uh guns, twenty firearms that we're gonna uh raffle off, and then we have a silent auction with a bunch of really cool uh items. And uh, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Keynote speaker, elected officials, gun shops, Juan's gonna be there.
Right. It's a good place to come, you know, it's a good place to come and interming, mingle around with a lot of like-minded folks.
Yep.
That believe in Second Amendment rights, believe you should. If you wanna own a firearm, you should have the right to own a firearm as long as you follow all the rules and regulations. And speaking of which, let's go to Juan, you were gonna talk about some of the comply, I asked you yesterday, cause I read someplace where somebody had said that the, the best home, home weapon they ever had was an AR. So I had to ask Juan, I go, what do you think? And you came up with thirty-eight frickin' California compliances that made me love my Mossberg even more.
Yeah, well, you know, state of California has put so many restrictions as far as, well, starting July, if you have an AR fifteen, you have to register it as assault rifle. You do have the option to convert it to a, what they call a, a featureless rifle.
And what does that mean, featureless? That makes it sound like I'm just getting a piece of metal with a hole in the end of it.
Right, so there, there's features that are considered assault rifle features. A flash hider, um, is assault rifle, so you have to change that to either a compensator or a muzzle brake.
Okay.
Um, the bullet button is now considered assault rifle feature. The pistol grip, and if you have a forward grip, all those are assault rifle, rifle features. Also a adjustable, not adjustable, collapsible buttstock is assault rifle feature. So you need to remove all those.
Features.
Items, all those features, and replace them with California approved features.
Who approves these parts and pieces? Are these people knowledgeable about firearms?
So, you know, honestly, I, I wonder sometimes.
I, well, that's what I'm thinking, you know, I mean, look how excited they got over the butt, the bump stock.
Right.
I mean, to listen to the media and the, oh my gosh, you thought that was the end all, the end all, man. Once we get rid of those bump stocks, we'll never have any more problems again.
Right.
Half us didn't even know what a bump stock was.
No, and, and that's not the, the, the problem is not the machine.
No.
It's the person, the operator.
Yes, exactly. I mean, I could run over you with a dump truck.
Right.
So what are you gonna do? Ban dump trucks now for the rest of our, you know, you get a bad knives, you're gonna, you know, I get it. So, 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 okay, so we get this gun totally basically stripped down.
Right, so that's one of the things we, we actually specialize in, is helping people stay compliant. Um, we have a, a platform called Ledesma. Basically, the kit changes your buttstock to a non-collapsible. The pistol grip changes to about a forty degree angle, so part of the penal code says that the pistol grip cannot hang conspicuously below the action.
Mm-hmm.
So, and by definition, that means that the webbing of your hand, excuse me, has to be above the trigger well. So a pistol grip that we provide puts the angle where your webbing of your hand is gonna be above the trigger well. We, it comes with a compensator, so you get rid of the flash hider, it comes with a mag release, because now you have to get rid of the bullet button, so you put a regular mag release on it now.
Right. Okay, so to modify, say somebody has an AR and they're listening, they say, all right, I guess I'll go down and.
Right.
Bite the bullet. What kind of money are we talking to convert?
For the entire kit, you're looking about a hundred and thirty dollars.
That's not bad.
And that's installed, we'll install it for you.
Really?
Yeah.
That's not bad at all.
And you can piece it out, you can buy, if you already have your own buttstock, you could just get the pistol grip for about forty dollars.
Okay.
Um, and everything can be pieced out.
See, I thought it would be super expensive, didn't you?
Yeah, I, it's, uh, that's a very reasonable price.
I couldn't believe it, yeah, that, that, cause I expected, you know, cause let's face it, you know, with the governor, if California says you gotta do it, I knew it had to cost a lot of money.
Especially installed, that's really great.
Right, yeah, we'll, we'll install it. Um, there are some stuff out there that's more expensive. Some of the fixed magazine, that's the other option you have, is to go fixed magazine, where you cannot remove the magazine unless you break the rifle apart, you separate the two actions.
Right.
Um, which we have a, a really good system for that also that we carry, it's called a three-three-three. Um, it's probably the only one that I've seen that I like, because the problem with the fixed magazine is, once you run into a jam, you cannot eject the magazine, unless you somehow drill out the feature or disassemble it, um, and you don't wanna walk around with the bunch of rounds in a magazine.
No.
And, and have another one stuck in the chamber somewhere.